All right, welcome everyone. I am Councilmember Zach Hall and I'm calling the September 9th, 2025 City Council Planning, Development and Environment Committee to order at 6:33 PM. I'm joined by Council President Walsh and Councilmember Jiang. Quickly to run through the agenda, we'll take public comment at the top of the meeting. We'll do approval of minutes for the July 8 meeting and then we'll run into our only measure of business today, COM 0109, the Tree Preservation Code Amendments, and we'll take announcements. So moving into our first item on the agenda, which is public comments, I just want to check in with the clerk to see if anyone signed in in advance for public comment.
No Chair, they have not.
And do we have any members of the public online with us right now?
No Chair, we do not.
Great. I do see some members of the public with us. Anyone that would like to provide public comment now, there will also be an opportunity after the presentation for public comment and our question and answer period. You want to go now or later? You could do both too, yeah. Later? Later too? Good? Oh, you'd like to go now? All right, you've heard our kind of public comment guidelines many times, so I'm just going to say stick to... Yeah, I'll just say stick to five minutes and start with name and where you're from. Thanks.
David Kapler, 255 Southeast Andrews Street, downtown Issaquah. Actually, what surprised me going through all the materials was there was no issues about solar access to roofs and the tree issue surrounding that. Solar, in the winter, the big trees across the alley from my roof definitely cuts down the solar access. In the summer, it seems I get a lot of sun. And it's amazing to me how much I can carry through with Puget Sound Energy credit on that and how low my utility electric bill is for a number of months. But I didn't see any mention about solar access and tree issues and how that might be an important one for certain people. And when you have great access to it, it's financial and should be an environmental benefit too. It's different than the trees are doing, but it's important. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And unless you say otherwise, I'll just assume other members of the public will give public comment later. Yes? Okay, perfect. Then we will move on to approval of the minutes of the July 8, 2025 meeting minutes, which were distributed in advance. I'll just ask the committee any corrections or opposition to approving by unanimous consent. All right, great. Hearing none, the July 8, 2025 meeting minutes are approved as presented. And we'll now move into the business of the evening. Agenda item COM 0109, Tree Preservation Code Amendments, presented by Director Dollywall. And Director, feel free to take it away whenever you're ready.
Good evening, Council Committee and members of the community who are here tonight. I am going to quickly share my screen. All right, so we're here tonight to talk about Tree Preservation Code Amendments and review the draft. And after committee discussion, you can finalize your recommendation to full City Council for adoption. A little bit of background on the process piece here. So in 2023, the city did a major overhaul of all land use regulations and included in there was a chapter for tree preservation. Some of the big changes that were done with the Tree Preservation Code were the methodology of how the tree preservation was preserved. So instead of counting the number of trees, a canopy coverage methodology approach was put in place to meet the city's climate action plan goals of increasing a tree canopy to 55%. So this helped, you know, not only look at the number of trees being preserved, but there were incentives to preserve larger canopy trees because it was based on the canopy instead of counting the tree density. So then, as part of that, was also the whole study done. We used the city's 2019 urban tree canopy study that had done it based on neighborhoods, established what the tree canopy coverage was, and then a table was formed in the code to establish that canopy coverage and increased a little bit to meet the ICAP goal by neighborhood. So when we started implementing the code, it became obvious that a neighborhood percentage didn't really work out on a parcel-by-parcel basis. So hence, this effort in 2025 was to fix that methodology. That was the primary goal of bringing forward these code amendments. And we heard from applicants, primarily single-family homeowners, that removal of one tree triggered the entire site to be brought up to that percentage. So it seemed disproportionate to the effort or the action that the applicant wanted to take and what we were requiring. So we started in April with conversation with Environmental Board, had a meeting with Planning and Policy Commission, followed through a couple of meetings in May and June. And July 10 is when the Planning and Policy Commission held a formal hearing, although public comments came in throughout this process. And they deliberated at that meeting on July 10, and we are here to present their recommendation to you. So the first main policy changes as part of this grouping is really the canopy cover targets. So instead of basing it on neighborhood, it still takes into account the tree canopy study that had established percentages based on potential planting areas. So, you know, you take out your water bodies, you take out your streets and your impervious surface, your roof lines and all that, and through that canopy study, you can establish what's the possible planting areas by neighborhood. So that factored in into it. We looked at land uses, residential, commercial, mixed, wherever that belonged, and then what were the lot sizes. And then, what's in the table now, it takes all of that into consideration, and your canopy cover targets are based on lot size and land use. And it still takes into consideration possible planting areas in those neighborhoods as we parse those out by zone. The other objective or main policy change in these proposed amendments is related...I don't know what happened. Okay. Simplified regulations are related to hazardous trees or nuisance trees and replacement for existing developed properties. So to keep it simple, if you take one tree out and it's hazardous, you can plant one, one-for-one replacement. If you think your property has a lot of trees and you already meet the percentage, you can give us the calculation and you don't have to replant because you already meet your percentage. But if you don't want to do the calculation, you just want to take one out and replant, you can do the streamlined process with that. We also changed the nuisance tree definition, so it's not just, you know, causing damage, but also likely to cause damage. So if we know this particular type of a tree is going to create a hazard on sidewalks, streets by buckling, instead of waiting for it to cause the damage, we can preemptively take some of the actions or allow some of those removals. The other one was to clarify that the table of tree canopy coverage is only triggered when you're doing brand-new development or redevelopment. And redevelopment is defined in the Land Use Code as 50% improvement value. So, and it's also not just, you know, interior work, you're actually expanding and things like that for the purposes of the tree code. The last big policy change here was to build in some flexibility for central Issaquah sub-area because a lot of trees there are parking lot trees as redevelopment occurs. You know, is there value in saving scrawny parking lot trees versus getting redevelopment or transition of those parking lots into more intensive uses? So there's a criteria to allow those trees to be replanted with the idea that you would still be able to increase tree canopy in those areas because one of the things that the canopy study has shown is that places like that are urban heat island effects. So we do need more trees in central Issaquah, in the Highlands, because that's where the canopy coverage is less. Not overall, but in certain areas of those sub-areas. Let's see. So, you know, a few of these slides are real quickly walking through what we heard from Environmental Board and Planning and Policy Commission at these meetings. I'm going to quickly go through them, but it's just to give you a sense of what sort of discussion happened at those meetings. Environmental Board also wrote up a letter with their recommendation that's in your packet. There was discussion about how tree fund is used. They wanted more real-world testing of, you know, on this parcel, this is the lot size, how many trees and that sort of stuff. They wanted to address heat island effect problem. There was a discussion about multifamily and whether what's the right target for that type of land use. Also discussion about coordination with wildfire mitigation, and part of that, we'll get into it a little bit. They wanted to explore a new approach for homeowner association on tracts and then also identify planting areas with flexibility. Then, some other things we heard was public education was important around trees, clarifying replacement regulations, relief for emergency events, flexibility for central Issaquah. They wanted a little bit more time to talk about some of these things. Planning and Policy Commission said, "We don't have a really small lot category, so anything less than 5,000, we should probably add the category." And so we added that. They talked about city-owned properties, you know, more of a program for how we can do more plantings on city-owned properties. So that comes from the Urban Forestry Program and city's first urban forestry plan. They wanted to discuss deciduous versus evergreen replacements, so, you know, the code currently allows some sort of, you know, flexibility. They wanted to adjust the hazardous tree exemption, talked about tree giveaway programs, so not really code issues, but more programmatic things. Wanted us to continue to keep a pulse on wildfire code updates and, you know, keep that on the radar for future conversations, but add some small fixes at this time. They wanted us to include some example site plans for you all. Again, we posed a few policy questions to both of them. I'll get into that a little bit. And like I said, Environmental Board has their recommendation in letter format in your packet. The deliberation with the Planning and Policy Commission on July 10, they passed on the draft code and asked us to make some of these changes. And one of them was, you know, if the tree is already down through Bomb Cyclone and others, do we really need a permit? Do we need an arborist report to clarify that? Because there's an emergency tree removal section, but that is if there is an impending danger and you're trying to take it down. And so we clarified that if it's already a fallen tree, you don't need an arborist report, it's already down. They wanted to kind of make sure you all understood the central Issaquah flexibility piece that's in the draft code, HOA permitting, which isn't a code issue, but, you know, if a homeowner association owns multiple tracts, this happens for a Talis neighborhood, that we could review it all under one permit instead of getting separate permits. And that's just an implementation thing, we don't need a code change for that. They also wanted to clarify the interplay between critical area code and tree code that's specifically called out, and so we made sure the language is in there that discusses that because the critical area code also has no net loss requirements and things like that that come from state law. So, but you still need to meet critical area code requirements if the tree is in a critical area, steep slopes, wetlands, stream buffers and so. There was some awkward language about one-to-one replacement that came from public comments as well, and they wanted to fix that. They also wanted us to reach out to tribes about the heritage tree program, which Dan Hints from Parks Department and I did meet with them and have proposed some draft language in the code here. So some of the policy questions that we asked throughout this process was, should this, you know, if the site meets the canopy coverage targets, do we really need one-to-one replacement? And the answer was no. If you already have a site that meets your canopy coverage and you have a tree that needs to come out, you do not need to replant it because your site meets. And both Environmental Board and Planning and Policy Commission recommended that. We asked them about this. This is the main policy question about the methodology for creating this table, which is taking the urban tree canopy, potential planning areas, average lot size, and the coming up with a percentage. And so instead of going by the neighborhood, now it's based on zone and the land use and the lot size. So they agreed with the proposed recommended table in the draft. Some examples of what the old method and the new method show, so for instance, in Talis, overall neighborhood canopy is 73%, but that includes some of the areas that are protected open spaces. And 73% is almost impossible for any lots to meet. The language in the code did not allow any fee-in-luof option, and the lot size was not considered. So, under the new method, the canopy coverage is 25%. It's feasible for most lots. If you really can't do this, then you can put a fee-in-luof. You can still pay fee-in-luof and lot size is considered. The part about the...another example, Old Town had a 33% because, you know, that's what was for the whole neighborhood. It goes up to 35%, so this is where it got slightly up. Again, fee-in-lu was provided as an option in most cases to build in that flexibility that if there's really no room on your property, then you can pay fee-in-luof for replacement. The third question we asked them was, you know, when do these target percentages come into play? In all situations or only when with new development or redevelopment? And so I think everyone consensus around new development, redevelopment, replacement should be one-to-one or one-to-two, we'll get into that. So yeah, the clarification that hazardous or nuisance trees are one-to-one replacement unless, of course, your property already meets the table canopy coverage, then no replacement is required. Landmark trees need to be replaced at one-to-two. Central Issaquah flexibility, you can reduce your percentage of 25% need to be tree preservation. So the way the tree regulations work is there's a separate section about tree preservation. So if you're doing any sort of development, you need to save some of those existing trees. Typically in this, in central Issaquah, it's 25%. Then you have this table that establishes what percentage you need to meet when you're all said and done with your redevelopment or redevelopment. So for the purposes of saving the existing trees, it's because even if you plant a new tree, it's going to take 20 years to grow. So there's a temporal loss of benefits from the tree. So the idea that you at least get to save some of those existing. And there's a priority, save the biggest ones, save the ones in a grouping. However, we, you know, came into some of the development proposals that you really can't save even 25% when you're looking at redevelopment. The Trailhead Project being one and others. So the council had to add that in there in your housing, you know, development agreement piece or housing authority agreement. So we've defined when you're allowed to take out more than, you know, more than 75%. It's either a nuisance or a hazard, or you need it for site access, or you need it for frontage improvements or utility connections, or there's a conflict between form and intensity standards. So if you were trying to, you know, get more dense development in central Issaquah, then and there's a clump of trees in the middle of the site, then that probably needs to go in order to put a building there, but you still can plant trees around the perimeter and other places. So that's sort of the criteria. And in order to not give everyone, you know, no incentive for taking every tree out, the B gets into some of the nuances that, yes, you can, you know, take down more than 75%, but the ones that you need to replant for those are for every one tree, six inches of diameter, you need to plant one tree. So you still need to account for the ones you've taken down and get those in place in addition to meeting your canopy coverage. So there's a little bit of an incentive. If there's a way they want, someone wants to preserve existing trees, they don't have, you know, they don't have to replant those. So it gets complex, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have around it.
I have a quick one then, just to clarify. So would this set of flexibility criteria then cover the example that you had kind of earlier in the presentation around new central Issaquah development in parking lots where we're anticipating larger density? Where the trees are maybe in some median strip in the middle of the parking lot where the building is actually going to be itself?
Yeah.
Okay, it does.
Yeah. So here's an actual example that Development Commission just approved earlier this month. So the proposal was to take down this building. It's in mixed-use central Issaquah, and there's a stream on one side of the property. There are some conifers or evergreens along the stream that they could save and they are going to save, but they're going to infill a lot of that to help with, you know, with the stream buffer. But some of these other trees, because frontage improvement is required, like bigger sidewalks and things of that nature, some of those trees along the perimeter needed to go. And it's a townhouse development. So overall, when the project is done, it'll still meet our coverage objectives, but it'll be newer trees and as many trees in the stream buffer that they could save, they did. But flexibility was needed in order for the redevelopment to go instead of getting these parking lot trees to be preserved. So wildfire mitigation, we consulted with Eastside Fire and Rescue. We're using the standards in the National Fire Professional Association training module, which is relying on some of the guidance, but we have very good folks from EFOR that are doing this. We met with Kate and she kind of explained to us how they go about doing it. They're not taking a blanket approach of clear up everything around the structures, so we felt comfortable having that discussion. Environmental Board member that actually had them come to her property, we'd done this assessment also, discussed this. So we have a limited way of anyone that has gone through this process with Eastside Fire and Rescue can get a tree removal permit approved, as long as it's not in a critical area, because critical area regulations still apply. One of the comments we heard from Eastside Fire and Rescue is to take out the reference to Eastside Fire and Rescue, but allow anyone that has national, you know, the certification that we accept that. We believe at this point, it's a temporary, you know, Band-Aid measure until we get the wildfire risk assessment maps from Department of Natural Resources and we have a more robust discussion about it. Because we also don't want anyone coming and saying, "I'm certified with NFPA and therefore I need to take these trees down." There's more of a little bit of a comfort level if it's coming from Eastside Fire and Rescue, but that is based just on their own, you know, where they are today and the program and their desire to maybe let anyone who is, and it could be King County Conservation District who is this, but we can always come back and revisit that. So the other, I think we kind of, I walked you through these as we were going through. And then we asked them any other changes they wanted to consider, and so there were a few tweaks here and there that were made to the code. So whatever is in front of you was discussed with PPC and the five or six bullet points that they wanted us to make those changes. So we've made those changes and we have a draft code in front of you. The next steps would be, after your discussion deliberation, we would take it to, if you're ready to deliberate tonight for October 6, we can put it for a City Council adoption. And you can tell us if you want it on consent or regular, depending on your discussion tonight. That concludes my presentation. Again, we have this code for your discussion and finalizing your recommendation to cancel. And I should say one thing about the public comments that were made tonight about the solar access. So there is already a section in the code back in 2023, which allows removal of trees providing solar access to building incorporating an active solar energy system. So that is already baked in our code. And then I think as you hear some other public comments tonight, it's been helpful to hear real-world examples of folks having some issues with, and all of their feedback has helped make the code better, and we've incorporated as much as we could in this code. There may be a few things that they probably want to share with you to focus on.
Thank you very much, Dr. Dollywall. I'll open it up to the committee for questions. Anyone have questions? Council President, start with you.
Yeah. The Environmental Board asked to do code testing. Did we do that? Was that just the examples that were provided?
Correct. So we looked at some of those specific sites, and so that was early on at the stage. So then we had specific sites and lot sizes and looked at the examples that we shared.
Okay. If replanting needs to be done, can it be done within the critical area?
Yes.
Okay. So they'd be able to add to and enhance a critical area and not necessarily have to plant outside of that critical area if they're removing?
Because that's improving, you know, it's not a loss, it's improving the critical area. You can also take down hazardous and nuisance trees in a critical area. And, you know, the section goes into some other higher bar that, you know, you have to show, can you avoid it? Can it be mitigated? Can you leave the snags in place?
Yeah.
And in a limited fashion, but not clear-cutting for wildfire risk assessment would be more of a severe impact that couldn't meet our critical area code.
My big question. I understand why our current code isn't working. And I think it's a big problem that we've had it for two years while it isn't working. I don't understand why we're necessarily not looking to do something more similar to what other cities are doing, have been doing, what we used to do. I understand our idea is to increase tree canopy and that that is a fantastic goal. I'm just not sure I understand the relationship between that and the customer service of dealing with homeowners who are trying to take down trees, trying to make adjustments to their property, or the benefits that we get from being able to more cost-effectively build affordable housing. So I'm trying to understand why we think this is better than taking the approaches that other cities around us do, and whether it's worth the additional regulatory cost or, you know, the time it takes to interpret and understand and deal with the code that we're putting in place here.
Sure, I want to make sure I understand. So you're talking about the methodology, the canopy coverage methodology versus just counting the trees? Yeah, I mean, that was all discussed during the initial update and the pros and cons, the benefit of that was that there's some incentive for people to keep larger canopy trees. So if you have five on your property and you only needed to save one, you would take the largest tree canopy and you would leave the smallest tree, you know, in a hypothetical example. With a canopy coverage, there's more of an incentive of keeping a... With a canopy coverage, you're, there's more of an incentive of keeping a, a tree that provides larger canopy if you're allowed to take four and save one, right? So if there's a percentage of canopy, you have more options, you have, but there's an, there's an expectation that you would preserve larger canopy. That, that was sort of the discussion back at the time. Counting trees may be simpler for tree preservation or measure, you know, the tree preservation piece still measures the diameter. So it still talks about, you need to save 25% of the diameter. But if you're doing a new development of a property, it, it's not, you need to, you know, it's based on, for this site, you need to have at least 25% canopy coverage or 35% canopy coverage. So it's.
Okay. So if I'm understanding it, then the idea, as much as we're calling this tree canopy, the tree canopy concept only comes into place if somebody's doing a redevelopment. Otherwise, it uses a more traditional concept and similar to what other cities do related to diameter breast height, right?
Yeah. So that three, three sections. So tree preservation is by diameter. The, the new development and redevelopment is by canopy coverage. And then you have a hazardous tree or a nuisance tree replacement, which is sort of the canopy coverage. So if you take down a huge, you know, dog fur that has X percentage of canopy coverage, you need to plant something that eventually will be that, you know, there won't be a net loss. Because if you just do one for one replacement, you might take down a dog fur and plant a small apple tree and then you, you know, which isn't going to give you the kind of canopy coverage as, as a 20, you know, larger tree that will grow over time. So there could be potential loss of canopy for the citywide pieces. So I think it all ties into what the policy discussions for the city were to increase the canopy coverage by 55% and how to, how to achieve that.
Okay. So I understand the tree, the hazardous tree. I understand the infill and redevelopment. When you're talking about tree preservation, when does that come into account?
That comes into play with development and redevelopment. So you, you still, so if you have to do redevelopment, eventually you need to meet this canopy coverage, but if you have existing trees, you need to make an attempt to save them, at least 25% of them. So there's not a temporal loss that, you know, if in, in the next 20 years, you won't have that sort of canopy coverage. So there's some requirement to keep existing trees. So if, if someone was doing a plat, for example, and building 20 new, new lots or 20 new town homes or whatever, there are large trees that can be preserved, that potentially, you know, are providing shade, other ecological benefits that come with trees, then you, you have to save at least 25% of those. In some areas, I think the largest preservation requirement is 35%. And that's based on caliber inches. So you measure, you know, there are 10 trees. One is two inches, the other one is 20 inches. You add up all your inches and 25% of those inches you've got to save. So you have flexibility, which trees you want to save. You could save a lot of small ones in a corner because it's in a grouping, or you could save one big one, but overall, your caliber inches get preserved with the idea that you don't clear cut the entire site. You're able to save some during development and redevelopment. So that doesn't come into play with, with existing homeowners or anything like that.
Okay. I'm going to have to think all of that over again, because this is a very meaty topic. It really gets down into, you know, where are our goals and our priorities as a city and what are the downsides of making certain decisions? So, thank you.
And just to jump on that real quick and then we'll go to Councilmember Jane. Didn't you also say, so like in a, in a residential lot, a single family residential lot, if you meet canopy goal target already, you don't have to do a one for one replacement? So it also does make its way back into it sometimes, right?
The canopy coverage, then still, yeah. So if you, if you have pretty heavily canopy, canopied lot and you have a hazard tree or a nuisance tree, you can take it out without replacement.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Jane, go ahead.
Thanks, Director Dollywall, for this great presentation. Could you explain how subdivision could potentially affect the percentage of tree canopy required? So just, you know, basically from 10,000 to 15,000 square feet per lot, it's 45% required. From 5,000 to 10,000 square feet, 35% required. 5,000 less 25%. So I'm curious, like, if you had also, okay, so if you have a 10,000 square foot lot, let's say, you know, you need either 35% or 45% tree canopy. If you get subdivided into four 2,500 square foot, square foot lots, would you then go down to the 25% requirement? Sorry if that question was unclear.
Yeah, yeah, no, I hear, I hear what you're saying. Let me find that table here. So in your example that you were talking about, there's a 10,000 square foot lot.
Yeah.
And if it's zoned, any one of these, it's, it's probably like a 45% canopy.
Yeah.
And then you're down to, say, 5,000 square foot, four lots. And those are at 25% each. So yeah, with subdivision, you potentially could, in, in your example.
Yeah.
So 45% of 10,000 is going to be 4,500 square foot of canopy cover. And then 25% of 5,000 is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it would be, you know, 25% of the whole area compared to 45%.
Yeah, 25 per each lot, because, but your lot size is getting smaller. So yes, in that example, you could potentially lose that. However, I would say that, you know, as, there'll be a few checks and balances. So the first would be you come in and you want a short plat, your 10,000 square foot lot into four lots.
Yeah.
Right? So the 25% tree preservation requirement might kick in. So you will have to save some for your plat, plat itself at that time. And then for each lot, you would, so theoretically, yes, it could be a dip. Practically, you know, between tree preservation and getting this, there'll be that balance of getting development and still getting some tree canopy.
Yeah. Well, thanks for clarifying. I guess one other thing that is a bit confusing in the code, now that I'm looking at it again, is that, you know, there's one section that says 5,000 to 10,000 square feet, and the next one says 10,000 to 15,000 square feet. I don't know if there's any lot that is exactly 10,000 square feet, you know, with not, not
Could it fall under that category of that?
Yeah. Which category it'd fall into. So I'd recommend changing it, one of them to like 9999 or 10,001.
Or less than or more than, or something like that.
Yeah, yeah, just to clarify.
Yeah, we can make that change.
Okay, great, thank you. Oh yeah, I did have more questions. Okay, so I was curious, there's one section on replacement trees that says, you know, there's an inspection required. Who performs those inspections? Basically, it's like, there's a required inspection to confirm that the, you know, tree species and all planting, whatever is good.
Yeah, so we have a staff member, senior planning inspector, who reviews the tree permits and also goes and does inspections for trees.
Okay, great. And then there are a few things that we had talked about that I don't think are incorporated in this tree code update, in particular, you know, codes related to wildfire and removing hazard trees within wildfire buffers, as well as potentially, you know, the cost of tree permits, which are, we've heard in some of our public comments, they're very high. So I'm curious when we're planning on looking at those.
Yeah, so for the wildfire risk assessment maps that Department of Natural Resources is producing are anticipated to come out next summer. So once we get those, then we will review them, see where they go. There's also, you know, going to be some state legislation potentially around that because some of the lessons that were learned from Oregon were when those maps came out, insurance is pulled out, people lost insurance coverage and those kinds of things, right? So we need to wait and see how that all plays out with the state rolling out new maps, any changes in state law. And then, and then the interplay between trees and critical areas, if there's some clarification on what, what that looks like. For if you are in a stream buffer, for instance, and wildfire risk assessment, if there's an overlap between those two, what to do. So that'll be the meatier discussion, but that, that will follow after the maps are done. As you may remember, we had this conversation with council in the past when wildland urban interface was an optional item under the building code, which is entitled 16. And at the time, the city did adopt just one provision of that code, which was if you have a home at the end of a driveway, which is more than 300 feet, you have to provide a turnaround for fire equipment to get up and serve the home. But the, the tree mitigation stuff was not handled. There are other things that can be done for structure hardening, you know, the type of roofs, you know, to avoid embers from taking off, the insulation protection, blocking some of the openings, hardening your structure and so on, and keeping some space between dry vegetation in your home. So it'll be a full on discussion, but it will follow after some, next summer when the maps are out. In terms of the cost of tree permits, we heard a lot of public testimony and, and, you know, that's informed some of our thought process here. Currently, we bring forth our fee ordinance to council for annual inflation increases in November. So we will, and, and then during that time, we tackle some of these other things that either need to streamline some fees because they're too complex or make some of these adjustments. So we'll incorporate some of that feedback during that time when the, the fees are updated. And the feedback specifically from public comments during this update were related to the cost of $350 is excessive and it's a barrier for people trying to come into compliance that they might take down the trees without getting a permit. We have no fee permit for hazardous trees and we have $350 permit for any other type of tree removal, nuisance tree or anything like that. So, you know, we can bring forth some analysis that shows maybe lowering the $350 fee, but creating a blanket fee for all permits, so we're not distinguishing, because we do have debates with folks of this is a hazard tree, not a nuisance tree, because the hazard tree is zero cost. So there may be some room for us to, to fix some of that problem and, and look at how many have we issued? You know, it's a, it's not a huge cost to the city, but we'll bring that with the fee ordinance update.
Great, thank you.
Maybe I'll just ask more broadly too, before we launch into next round of public comment. It, it feels challenging to, to understand at times, and I imagine this is probably an area of code where residents interact with more frequently than other areas of code. Regardless of any changes committee might like to see, let's say, we decide to move forward to council and then council gives you the thumbs up and we adopt it into code. What is done on the implementation side to help residents interact or different code users interact with the code? We've heard things like kind of a matrix to really visually see what's needed based on what tree you have or what you're trying to do. There's the kind of make your own adventure storybooks from when we were kids, right? For like, you're, you're starting out, you have a tree, here's step one, step two, to try and make it more digestible for residents. What are the things that kind of happen on the backend that maybe we should be aware of?
Yeah, great question and great feedback from community members. We have a lot, you know, we can certainly prioritize the tree permits in terms of the handouts, the communication piece. I mean, there's a lot you can do these days with more interactive things that you're talking about, more scenario based examples for people to understand and more clear guidance of what you need and here's what, here's you go about doing it. So we'll definitely, after council's adoption, work on videos, handouts, newsletters, a public education piece, workshops, whatever that implementation is, is desired by council. But definitely the website update and handouts for sure.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from committee before we go into the next round of public comment? No? All right, great. Then we're going to go into public comment next. I'll just check in with our committee clerk real quick to see if there are any members of the public that have joined us virtually.
No chair.
Okay. So no one's with us virtually. We do have members of the public here. I assume you'd like to provide public comment, is that correct? Okay, I won't go through our whole list of kind of guidelines since I've seen you kind of interact here before. So just a reminder that feel free to come on up, whichever of you would like to come first to the lectern here. Five minutes and then please unmute and start with your name and, and address or your relationship to the city. And then just a reminder that we can't do Q and A right now, but we can try to ask staff to respond or follow up as needed. So whoever would like to come up first, come on up.
Thanks for having me. My name is Richard Scares. I'm a resident of the Montro neighborhood in west end of Issaquah. I'm also the vice president of the HOA with Montro. Thanks for having this meeting and I know I've enjoyed the interactions we've had with the city and working on the code over the last few months. Just to recap some of the points I brought up at the last time I was here, we went over the complexity of the tree code and I think a lot of it has to do with what the priorities are for the city of working, because not only the homeowners have to work these details, but also city employees have to work the details. And involving arborists and specialists and experts and tree companies and everybody else in the process, is the permit process emphasizing the safe removal of a tree? Or is it emphasizing competition between experts? Because our experience in the past is very adversarial with the city employees trying to get a permit approved, trying to prove whether a tree is hazardous or a nuisance, supplying photographs, paying for arborists, where one arborist supports your position and another arborist doesn't support your position. When, in essence, what is going on here is the safe removal of a tree and replacing it if necessary, closing the loop. What you have before the situation is a tree, what you have after the situation is a tree. And we spent an awful lot of time debating the condition of the tree versus accomplishing the goal of the permit process. I currently am a homeowner that had a nuisance tree removed, probably should have called it a hazardous tree because it would have not cost me the $350. The permit is still open. The can, I have 100% canopy over planable area. And I have not replaced the tree, but I have not heard anything from the city with regard to the permit that I applied for last November. So there is no closed loop process in implementation right now to verify if anything is getting done. And I don't know if that's a staffing issue or, or what, but you have to have staff to implement the code. Otherwise, why engage in, in the process? So we talked last time about complexity. Issaquah's the most expensive permit in this county by far. Most cities in the area range between 40 and $200 for a permit. Issaquah's over 350. So that is a disincentive for homeowners to even engage. If you require a replacement and you don't have a place to put it, faced with a fee in lieu of, of $1,000 to put a tree somewhere else, is a disincentive to follow the process or engage in the process. Add to that the cost of an arborist, the cost of a tree removal and everything else. It's, it's a huge disincentive to follow the process. The canopy percentage issue, like I said, mentioned before, I have almost 100% coverage on planable area. It's an 11,000 square foot lot. But when you deduct the structures, the driveways, the patios, the decks, the walkways that are on that property, if it's a 10,000 foot property and you have, in the case you're supposed to have 45% coverage and, and 60% of the property is covered by structure, that means that you're short. that means that you're short. Given the canopy calculation, you'd have to have more than 120% coverage of plantable area under trees. Otherwise, we're digging up driveways to plant trees. So the canopy calculation, when it considers gross property area versus net or plantable property area is out of whack. If your structure covers the available percentage and you're required to meet 100% threshold, really is what it comes down to in every category of lot size. A 5,000-foot lot, the structure probably takes up 70% of the lot and so on. So that doesn't really work that well. Code fixes, I really did enjoy seeing-
Please be advised, you are at five minutes.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Wrap it up. There is another HOA issue, Zach, that we're dealing with of requiring a bond for replacement trees in the NGPE area. And this area is subject to root rot. So if we're going to invest in a bond for replacement trees and put them into an area that has root rot, it's kind of, you can see where that logic goes. So just wanted to bring that up.
Thanks. Yeah, thank you very much. Who'd like to come up next? Yeah, go ahead.
Susan Glicksberg, also Montro neighborhood. I'm here as a homeowner, but also am on my homeowners association board. So I'm going to start with thank you. I think some of the points that we have made have been received and have been altered in the code. The biggest one was the one-to-one replacement. We were dealing with having to put seven trees on a lot where you could only really plant one additional tree and that has been solved and I appreciate that. And also the emergency removal has been clarified. However, I think there's still one more thing, and that is when you read it, it says if a tree falls on a structure, they must then replant another tree, which seems sort of adding insult to injury. So if there's any kind of relief that can be given for someone who has suffered a loss like that, then having to pay to put a tree in seems a little bit overkill. That's my first, so my first point is the emergency tree removal. My second point is, is I think there's still some clarity needed around when you can remove a tree. And I used an example that I actually lived. I had a tree on the, it was in the NGPE, so it's the homeowners association responsibility, but it was a tree with feeder trees coming out of it. And it used to be a three kind of pronged tree. One was taken, one part of it was taken out way back. The other part shattered across my neighbor's backyard in a windstorm and it left one upshoot. And then there are all these little feeder trees that are getting bigger and bigger and bigger. When you walked around the back of the tree, it was clearly rotten. I could, I could see it, an arborist could see it. It was noted as that in an arborist report. And for some reason, it did not reach the level of being sufficiently hazardous or nuisances. And I don't know, this may have changed with, but it's not clear to me by reading the code that, that my tree would have risen to the level of having to be removed. It was eventually removed after two years of going back and forth. We finally did get agreement from the city, but I'm not sure why. And I think there needs to be clarity about when you can remove a tree, who makes that decision, what's the criteria for making that decision. And I think that's the end of my comments. So I do appreciate the leaps forward that we've made with the one-to-one and clarifying the emergency part. Thank you.
Thank you. We have some other members of the public. Would either of you, yeah, come on up.
Connie Marsh, Levon Squawk. This is about the 20th time I've talked about this particular topic, so I'm very tired of going over the same information. But I will try one more time because who can stop me? So the beginning of this was about neighborhoods and going to square footage. And I have chafed at this from the beginning. I don't understand. If you're in Montro, you have this enormous number of trees and then you have some little lots. Why are we not looking at the neighborhood as a total to see if they are accommodating their percentage for the neighborhood? And so their magnificent open space would allow fewer trees in these small lots and we would still be getting our canopy goal. But in this code change, we're ignoring that holistic concept of what the neighborhoods want, where they want their trees and how they want to live. And we're making this weird, you know, differentiation in square footage of things for redevelopment. Makes no sense to me in how a normal person lives their lives. We've talked about it over and over. PPC actually said, you know, it needs to be both, but the city keeps coming down with just about the exact same code every time. Now, replacement trees, simple, right? You take down a tree, you replace a tree. They say, well, you know, if you're meeting the canopy, well, then you have to go through this whole rigmarole of canopy. Forget about it. Make it neighborhood-wide, one-for-one, somewhere in the neighborhood, fine. So now the question is, is this thing ripe? Is it time? Are we even having the correct conversations? I maintain that we are not having the correct conversations. At this point in time, if you change the code for the central Issaquah area, you are actually impacting the EIS for what the tree coverage is supposed to be on those lots. You're also not looking at the recommendations from the environmental board, which did not agree with what Mini presented today. If you read their language, they said one-to-one regardless of tree canopy. You know, plant the tree, it'll die. Fine. So PPC said not ripe. We need to go through this again. We need to set it back. But it was shoved through where the council is supposed to make these decisions. We are reluctantly putting it forward because this is complicated and we don't think it's time, but you know, we're done with it, so move it along. That is not how it was represented. So it is, it's time to go back and look at what we are doing per neighborhood in this town, what we want to have happen. How do you make it so simple that you can actually get a permit through? I have a guy down the street who waited for months for a permit for a tree that was going to fall on his house. He just said, I'm cutting her down. I don't care if I have to pay $750 because it's going to cost more than that because it's going to fall on my house. So $350 fee, fine, but the city has its own employed arborist for the community to use. So they're paying 350, but they get an arborist service to tell them what they can do with their tree. Cut her down, have to keep it, limit up, good, paid for, right? That's part of your permit. That's what we need to do because they're paying the fee, they're paying the arborist, they're paying to cut it down. Then they're trying to figure out what their canopy is. Oh my goodness, like hire a guy on a Sunday and cut her down, right? That's the only rational answer. So it's not ripe, not ready to go, send her back. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one more member of the public with us. Would you like to make any more comments? No? And let me just check back in with our committee clerk to, and actually before I do that, I'm noticing some camera issues too. So Chance, please flicker the light if you, if you need us to stop and take a recess for anything. Otherwise, I'm just going to keep going. But I'll go to our committee clerk. Is there anyone online with us at the moment?
No, there is no one online. We did have a technical issue that was only for one camera, so we should be good-
Like auto zooms on things.
Yeah, so we-
I noticed that last night, too.
So we should be good to go right now.
Okay, thank you very much for checking on that. All right then, we're going to move into committee discussion. Direction needed is, let's go to that slide real quick, just to review the draft of the proposed amendments and finalize our recommendation to the council for adoption. So no particular questions. We want to answer just general comments. So we'll start with council president.
I know Connie will be shocked, shocked to hear this, but I absolutely agree with Connie that this is not right to move forward to council. I don't know what we are trying to achieve with this. I don't know whether or not the changes achieve that. And I think we really need to take these two questions entirely separately. One question is, what do we do with an existing homeowner who has a tree that needs to be removed, whether or not it's hazardous or not? I'm looking at other cities like Bothell. If you're under 20,000 square feet, you're not in a, by a shoreline, you're not with a critical area, you know, any of those things, no permit required. So I'm still not understanding why, when we are trying to address this issue, which from my standpoint came up for two reasons. One, we put in code in 2023 that caused problems. And two, we had a bomb cyclone that exacerbated this issue. I think we need to take a step back and understand the situation that homeowners and probably HOAs are experiencing with the costs and the delays and the requirements. And really, it would take a big lift for me to understand why we would want to put something in place that is not similar to what other cities in the area have done. So that's my perspective when it comes to hazardous and nuisance and just existing homeowner situations where they have trees. When we're talking about redevelopment and infill development, I really do not understand why central Issaquah would be treated separately. I think the idea of working collaborative with builders to achieve something that will help the communities canopy and help the look of a development in the future and help keep costs low is extremely vital. And so I think that those would be the elements that I would be looking at when we're talking about tree code when it comes to redevelopment is how do we achieve those goals? And I just don't see that necessarily in here. So I'm very much for taking on the tree code and fixing the errors that we have put in place, but I just don't think this is ready nor does it meet, does it define what problems we're trying to solve, the outcomes we're expecting to achieve with this and how this will help community members.
Thank you. Councilmember Jane, go ahead.
Yeah, I agree with everything that council president Walsh and Connie said as well. I think, you know, the first step in any type of process should be, let's define upfront what the goals are and get to consensus on that. And I actually, looking back on this, you know, I don't see those goals defined anywhere. And so I think that makes it really hard for us to, you know, see if we're successful. We spent a lot of time working on this, but you know, I think some of my questions around, you know, does subdividing the lots impact the amount of canopy that you have to preserve? I think that to me, you know, in addition to all the other concerns that were brought up, I think one of the things that we've seen is a lot of these types of developments that are really tall and skinny. And if for a developer, you're like, oh, if I subdivide into the smaller lot size, I can retain fewer trees, that actually encourages them to go in that direction rather than, you know, some of the development types that are more similar to what we see in Old Town with, you know, duplexes or fourplexes on a larger lot. So that to me is a concern on the development side. I think in terms of the goals, you know, there's a few things like we want to have tree canopy. We also want to make it easy to follow the process for tree removal when that's necessary. And I, I think obviously, you know, those two are going to be in tension because if you want to have as much tree canopy as possible, you're going to want to make it as hard as possible to remove trees. But I think the feedback that we've received from basically everyone is that, you know, the current requirements are so strict and it causes kind of almost like an adversarial relationship between, you know, the residents of our community or, you know, people in the community and the government, which is not something that we want to have. So I think, and just given that, I think maybe we want to, I think I agree with council president Walsh that we need to go back and start with, you know, what are the goals of this process and then, and determine, is what we have now actually getting us to those goals? You know, we've made a lot of changes. I think, you know, the neighborhood thing versus the lot size thing, you know, I could be persuaded either way, but I do think that neighborhoods that have like a very significant, you know, open spaces, part of the development, like Talis, you know, the example that you showed, I actually lived like right near there. And those lots, I mean, it's like basically 0% impervious area and the only tree canopy that they have is from like street trees and, you know, trees in the wetland that's behind the development. So like the amount of tree canopy that you have is basically completely out of your control. So it's just really hard for me to understand why we need to require those people to have 25% tree canopy when they have zero plantable area, which is fine because they're near, you know, 4,000 acres of basically like 100% tree canopy on Cougar Mountain.
Could I just clarify one item on that?
Oh, please.
So in the example of the Talis property, for instance, the canopy coverage won't come into play because if someone that already has a developed property and they have a hazardous or a nuisance tree, all they need to do is replace one-for-one. If they can't replace on their property, they can pay a fee in lieu of, which can be a tree planted somewhere else within the same subarea. So, so in those examples, the canopy coverage table doesn't come into play unless they tear down the house and they're trying to redevelop. Just want to make sure that, that, you know, the difference of when, when it's applicable is clear. So one of the objectives that this code does is adds that clarity of one-to-one replacement. So which is a huge help to existing homeowners and it goes to the fact that you don't have to meet the coverage, you know, you don't even have to do one-to-one replacement if you meet the canopy coverage requirements. So that's a big fix for what we heard from homeowners. And if council wants to not change the canopy coverage percentages and put that on a different path, that one code amendment of doing one-to-one replacement and not requiring replacement trees, if you meet the canopy coverage, is going to help the existing homeowners significantly. If that's the goal the council wants to achieve, then I think that part of the code amendment could move forward if you all decide to do that.
I see the city administrator turned on his mic. Let's go over to you.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair members of the committee. Trees are tough in Issaquah. We have a lot of them. People value them very much. And I think that the community standard that your staff has been asked to enforce over a very extended period of time has been trust no one, that the tree is king, that you need to make sure that we protect the tree at every opportunity and the threshold should be very, very high for any change. Regardless of the real world circumstance, that that has been the community standard that your staff has been asked to implement, again, over a long period of time. What you have before you tonight, as you've said, comes out of the additional business we've had over the last nine or 10 months because of the bomb cyclone. And as Mini indicated, there's a couple pieces here that the administration really feels strongly about because we feel that will provide residents relief now. But the committee also has raised some serious questions about the general premise of how we regulate trees. You know, do we trust our residents to do the right thing or is the tree the king? And as our staff, they're not on behalf of the resident, but on behalf of the tree. And as being here almost six years, my impression has always been that the staff is there for the tree, not the resident, not the property owner, not the neighborhood, but for the tree. And so if the council feels that we need to revisit this so that we take into the real world examples, that's great. And I think the idea- And I think the idea of, of setting some policy questions up first and have some general agreement would be very helpful to us. I think that's going to take some time in order to go back to all the stakeholders that have already participated in this process. So if the committee feels that we do need to take a, a, a larger look at some of the general community standards behind this, that's great. And we can come back with a, in pretty short order, a process that won't take forever, but will take some time to do. But in the meantime, there are probably a couple pieces here that there's general agreement on. And if we can shake those loose, send them to the full council, relay to the full council, this discussion this evening, hopefully get consensus, adopt some changes, but then go back and have the larger discussion, I think that would be a very productive way to proceed.
All right. So this is going to be a longer committee meeting. So, yeah, I mean, I was also just gonna, well, thank you very much for kind of level-setting us there. I think that kind of sets up the rest of the committee. I was going to echo comments from the committee. Just, I think from my perspective, it's just very complex. I, I think it probably gets us the outcomes that we want, but it just seems very complex for users and for residents. And is there now a way for us to have a very simple policy that gets us the same outcome? And I just don't know the answer to that yet. So I would hope that we could keep hold of this issue at this committee. Although, of course, I would be open to thoughts about, going back to poison commissions, though they've had several touches already on these. So now you asked the question of what are the, and I was going to ask this question too, based on what was coming up, on what are the things we could come to agreement on that have been identified by community members, like the one-for-one replacement and things like that, that we could send to council? Maybe I'll just open it up generally for any kind of general comments about that. But I think I'm going to need some help from staff, just in terms of, first and foremost, are you hearing? How do I want to frame this? So a larger discussion is going to take several months. You and your staff are the ones who have been interacting with community the most in terms of what policies really should bubble up and go to council next month to be responsive. In your eyes, what are those handful of policies that are most important that we should talk about right now to see if there's consensus?
Sure. The existing homeowners that want to take down trees, people are waiting to have this new code in place. So if they hear it's delayed or it's not done, that could be an issue to be explained to them why, you know, people will need to know why. And, and so, so I think that in terms of the priority for existing homeowners, it's letting them cut down and replace for one-to-one. If they meet the canopy coverage, they don't need to replant. Is priority number one. There's a lot of people waiting in line to get their permits, you know, waiting to get that amendment in place. The, along with that, to make it effective, would be some other provisions that talk about this particular table does not, only applies to development and redevelopment. And, you know, the, the boards and commissions have debated that. I think there's general consensus on your side that full canopy coverage requirement only comes into play for development or redevelopment. So that would be number two, which is sort of part of the First, First Amendment. You know, and then there were some benign things that, that we met with tribes. They commented on it, you know, if we, if adding a definition, is that too big a deal to delay? I mean, there may be a suite of things that we could, that aren't controversial, aren't big policy issues that, that are more on the cleanup side, that would be the third priority, that, that at least we make it with this first round. The bigger meatier discussion that you want to have more time to think about would be the percentage and changing that methodology to land use and lot size. If you are interested in just keeping that, that to the neighborhood scale at this point, it will come into play and be problematic for new development and redevelopment, but it won't impact existing homeowners wanting to take stuff down and replant and replace. That would be our recommendation.
Okay. So then, just so I'm following kind of these three buckets. First, the existing homeowners bucket that you're saying, let them replace one for one. And if they meet coverage already, don't have to replant, or do, don't have to replace. Then there's the full, full canopy coverage only coming into play for redevelopment or development and redevelopment projects.
Yeah.
And then some cleanup definition items as well that we don't necessarily have to find out before us tonight. And then the meatier discussion around.
The canopy coverage and whether you want to provide flexibility for Central Issaquah.
Oh, and then Central Issaquah too.
Those two are more meatier discussions. Do you want to have some flexibility beyond Central Issaquah is what I heard, not have, so those two, the, the table based on neighborhood size versus lot size, those two can be parsed out. The rest falls under those first three buckets.
Okay. So then let's go to committee real quick for general comments or any comments on kind of agreement on that kind of bucket of things and pulling out those meatier items. Council president, go ahead.
Yeah. I mean, I think that's a great way to go forward. I would just ask, I know one of the things with the 2023 change was to do this neighborhood idea. So because we're saying the tree canopy coverage goals, that table wouldn't be changed in this time period. But that table we're saying would only apply to redevelopment. So there would still be a pretty big barrier to any redevelopment while we have this conversation in areas that the neighborhood has a large tree canopy coverage. But for individual homeowners, in particular people that are waiting on a permit, we feel like the one-to-one replacement and no replacement if they meet canopy coverage, and having the table only applying to redevelopment would address
Correct.
the immediate
Correct.
needs.
Yeah. And if, if the council committee wants to address the redevelopment and development portion and add that flexibility, then you could go with that, do it now, but come back. Because one of the other things that the city has an opportunity to participate in is King County is doing a new canopy coverage study. So Dan Hens and I and our GIS folks have met, and we're trying to figure out what data can help inform some of those discussions. You know, can we parse out developed versus undeveloped portions by neighborhood? How would those, can we get that fine-grained data that that can help inform some of the policy discussions? That's underway. And then we can always, you know, revisit this if you, if, if you want to address the redevelopment and development flexibility in a, in a way. Because that, that table is going to help people. Instead of 73%, you've got 35%. So it's not onerous for folks. It's actually loosening the tree code. But if you, if you're not ready for that sort of discussion, you want more thought, then our recommendation would be we wait until this new data comes into play and then tinker with this because that may inform us realistically, can we, you know, what, what makes more sense?
Okay. So I guess I would ask the committee, I think what Director Deliwell said about, you know, making a change to the table for that redevelopment is only going to be beneficial at this time while we are revisiting things. I think I agree with that. Though I think the, the idea of simplifying everything entirely is my number one goal. And I think the other feedback I would put out there is, even if we did adopt a portion of this, what I would be asking for in a future conversation with the community and policy goals isn't just for those redevelopment sites. It's for everything. Like, how do we create the best user experience and achieve our policy goals? So
And that's perfectly fine. I mean, but it's going to take some time.
Yeah.
And again, this is, this is a substantial change in process. And so I just want to make sure that all of your colleagues are buying into this. And then as we go to our boards and commissions, they're buying into this because, again, this is just a substantial change in, in process. And community standards probably at the end of the day remains, but it's a substantial change in process. So if we could shake loose again a few of these, we could repackage this, we could bring it to the full council. This was planning to go when?
I think we said October 9? What's the date?
If we could do this, I guess we can look at the calendar quickly without coming back to the committee
October 6.
with this repackaged, you know, limited number of things, I think that would be the administration's preference. And then come back to you either in October or November with a plan for a larger discussion and share when the, the first pieces comes to the council. Share with your colleagues the larger vision and just kind of get their general head nod that they're okay. Because I would hate to get through this and someone say, why is the city council making it so easy for people to take down trees? Don't you understand we're a tree city, blah, blah, blah. I, I don't want it six months from now to have another group of residents come before us and say, what are you doing?
So for the committee, it sounds like then there are four areas that we would move forward with, which is the one-to-one replacement or no replacement if they meet canopy coverage. The table only applies to 50% or above redevelopment. The third new one is, we will update the table percentages. And then the fourth one is cleanup, including the landmark tree definitions. So is that what we have understood?
I guess. So I'm looking at this list of amendments. And in terms of the major amendments, you know, if we are doing the, updating the table with the neighborhoods, I think that's basically the first two major amendments. I think pretty much all the minor and cleanup amendments are fine. You know, it's like changes to definitions and things like that. And then the major ones are more like policy decisions of, you know, allowing the one-to-one replacement. And then, and, you know, giving the fee in lieu option, all that kind of stuff. I guess the last one on here, which we haven't discussed yet, is, you know, the allowed deviation section for Central Issaquah, which we have, you know, received public comments in support of. I think that's something we could also revisit later, but is that something where we want to say, you know, at least in the interim, we're okay with this? And it's the last one on page four. It says, introduce tree retention flexibility for properties in the Central Issaquah subarea. Do we want to keep preserving random parking lot trees? Because I think, I think one thing that I've been hearing is that, you know, this is, I think, on balance, all these amendments are better than what we have right now. And as long as
A lot better, I should add.
Yeah.
Not just a minor, but
Yeah. So I think what we, you know, what we're presented with tonight is better than the current state. And I think the question is not, is this the end-all, be-all? But like, should we do this now? And I think, you know, the administration's also acknowledging that we've heard from our residents that we want to, you know, continue improving. But adopting this code now with all these significant improvements doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to just stop working on this.
I guess my own, that's a good point. That's well taken. I guess my only concern would be in staff time and cost, now implementing code in, in whatever we, however we train staff to use and apply code. So would it not be better to press pause on more of this while we have deeper conversations, but address some of the things that are immediate to avoid any kind of
Yeah, I think from a staff's perspective, this clarifies a bunch of stuff, which we haven't been able to give that flexibility to staff to provide that answer. So this, this definitely, the, the version that you have in front of you is going to help staff provide clear and concise answers on questions related to tree code. We are also doing internal training. We've had staff turnover. The individual that was doing tree permits is no longer with the city. Jason has been our point person and he goes out to the site more often. You know, he actually had with an HOA meeting with Montreau folks because of another critical area piece. So we're doing more on-field assessments with these things and not just looking at what homeowners have provided. We're providing more of a service of helping them get to the finish line, providing suggestions and ideas. So, so your question of whether this version will help staff, I think it will immensely help staff because it clarifies so many things that are confusing currently in the code.
And it will provide immediate relief to residents.
And so then, just so it's right in my head, are we still talking about the kind of limited scope of changes that you walked through? Are you talking about adopting everything that's before us with a commitment to revisiting soon after?
Yeah. You know, I've gone through the whole list, and it seems like the two things that you guys want to pull out probably are the table with percentages, if you think that, you know, live with the larger percentages until you get it right. And the Central Issaquah flexibility, whether that should be beyond Central Issaquah to other properties as well. So those two are bigger, meatier policy type of things. But the version, if you decide to go with all of it, will be, you know, you could recommend doing this whole thing, but pulling those two pieces out and getting a commitment that we have a deeper conversation after this new tree canopy data comes in to restart that conversation and figure out a more fine tuning or a complete redo of those tables and flexibility provisions. Those two seem larger policy objectives that you all were concerned about, if I am
So then is that, oh, go ahead.
I disagree. I, I think this whole thing is a larger policy conversation. So I think there's just huge questions here. And I think city administrator Bob Quetzin, talking about whether or not tree is king, or the homeowner and resident is king, really approaches the level of, do we have the right approach here? So I, I wouldn't say that it's just those two areas. Maybe the question I would ask in how much we decide to recommend to council right now is like, you obviously have this package up to us. It, I don't know whether it would just take more work to get this to council in a small modified version versus, okay, maybe we take this and then we send the big question back because the idea that this does help existing residents that are, yeah. So maybe help us understand, how easy is it to pull a few items out of this and implement it and present that to council versus taking the whole section, but also telling council, hey, we want to restart this process, but adopt this in the meantime?
Yeah. Obviously, taking the whole package is easier, for sure. It helps, you know, development and redevelopment category folks as well. It provides flexibility in Central Issaquah for sure. So that's the pro of that approach. You know, yet if you want to pull things out, then I think I was just skimming through the 16 pages that we have given to you. That's why I teased out those two pieces of Central Issaquah. We would strike that out and we would strike out any changes to the table, keep the table as is, but clarify that it only applies to development and redevelopment. So those are two options I'm thinking. You know, the third one is you just do very limited thing. But like councilmember Jane, you were saying, the other stuff seems pretty benign to me. I mean, skimming through and reading through, I mean, fixing a few clauses here and there. That, that's more in the cleanup category. So in terms of, yeah.
No, no worries. This new code also creates a fee-in-lue tree replacement, which we currently don't have. Do we feel like adding that when? That may not be the ultimate way that we address the policy as a good method or something that we should?
We, we allowed fee in lieu of, but it wasn't for all sorts of situations.
Okay.
The fee in lieu of was already there. We do get fee in lieu of. The city's been collecting the money. We're working with Parks Department on where to spend it and all that. That's been in, even under the old code, that was a provision.
Okay.
It, it really prohibited fee in lieu of for certain circumstances. So we've broadened that because
Okay.
we don't, we can't anticipate every possible scenario. And in some cases, they really can't plant anything on site. And so then they can pay a fee in lieu of. So we've broadened the applicability of it for more situations.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Yeah. I'm, I mean, I'm, I think I'm, I'm thinking it might be best All right. Yeah, I mean, I think I'm, I'm thinking it might be best to move forward with the two things that we've identified several times now removed. Is that, I just want to confirm that's the way we're all thinking about this right now?
What things removed?
The larger policy questions that we've talked about. So the changes to methodology from canopy to land use and lot size and then the central isiqua discussion. Is that option two, as you had identified that?
Yeah.
Is that what we're all okay with as of this point? Councilmember Jiang, go ahead.
I think in terms of the central isiqua thing, I think if, I think on, in terms of, you know, changing the table from the neighborhoods to the lot sizes, that's something where there's a lot of unanswered questions. So I'm okay with removing that. In terms of adding flexibility for central isiqua, I don't think we want to also add more flexibility somewhere else is a reason for us not to add flexibility to central isiqua right now, especially, you know, because we have received public comments in support of this. And seems like the administration has heard loud and clear from us many times that this needs to be an ongoing conversation and we need to look more into, you know, allowing flexibility in other neighborhoods in the city. So I think the central isiqua piece, I'm fine with keeping it in. You know, I don't, like, going back to the residents, I just don't feel like I can say something like, the reason we didn't offer you more flexibility is because we think every, that other people should also have more flexibility. So we're, we're keeping that from you as a, you know, ransom so that we can get flexibility everywhere. That doesn't really make sense to me as an argument that we can make to the public. So I'm okay with keeping the central isiqua flexibility and waiting and, you know, holding the discussion on the lot size piece until, or lot size versus neighborhoods versus whatever the case may be until, you know, we continue the process in the coming months.
Okay. No, that's a really good point, actually. I think I'm comfortable with that too then. Council President, you as well?
Yeah. So as I understand it, then we wouldn't update the table. So we would keep the idea of neighborhood-based targets for, only for things that are 50% plus redevelopment. So that still stands as a big thing for like Montreux, which says each lot would have to have 67%, rather than, you know, the new ideas, which are much smaller. But that only applies to redevelopment, not to individual homeowners who are trying to remove a tree because of issues. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. So what would happen in that scenario that you all are debating would be, under this tree canopy coverage, we would make the first A, that it only applies to development and redevelopment, right? Interior remodels and tenant improvements will not, are not subject to this requirement. We would add, make that change. We would make fix some of the, leave some of these changes, planning sub area, leave the table as is, and not add the new table. So. But we would probably add a map of this, these neighborhoods because I think that was missing from the code. And so people had a hard time figuring out, okay, where is this neighborhood or whatever, because now the comp plan neighborhood map doesn't quite, you know, because there's a category called King County. And so, but that came from the urban tree canopy study that Parks Department had done. That's how they qualified some of these neighborhoods. So that, that's, that's the issue with that table is that it needs a map. But we have a map from that study. So we would just put that map here.
Okay. And perhaps then it would also make sense for you and I, as chair, I could also follow up and connect with you to make sure whatever is brought to council reflects the content of this conversation as well. But are we feeling comfortable to move forward kind of as we've described amended to the council with this commitment to have a larger policy discussion around everything we've talked about tonight? Anything else you'd like to tease out from the committee before we head to council on October 6th then? Yeah, City Administrator, go ahead.
Well, thank you for taking the time to be diligent about pieces that we can shake loose because I think that's helpful for residents. It's also helpful for staff. When we talk staff, you know, there's one person in the field, Jason Bond, who is, you know, trying to do his best representing you, the municipal code, to implement what is the standard in the law. So thank you for the diligence tonight. I think the only other piece is what's the timeframe for you to start talking about the bigger picture? You have two meetings left before the council term ends. You have a meeting in December and then you have a meeting next month in October, which is the final review of the comp plan amendments. I honestly don't know that-
And fire code, fire fees.
And fire fees. We're not going to be ready for an October meeting to talk about this. So if you would like, we can put this on the meeting in December, which is, currently has no agenda items on December 2nd, to at least begin the discussion, I think we can be ready.
I think, I want to find out from Dan Hens when the new canopy study that's underway is, is going to be done. And perhaps it makes sense to wait until we have new data.
Well, but I think there's a larger issue that the council's raising, that the entire process should be streamlined. And I think we need to start talking about that. And I think information from Dan about that is a piece of, a data point that needs to come to that meeting. But I think the council's looking to make this more simple. And if we are, we need to get some parameters so that we can start the year, going back to boards and commissions, seeing if there's any change in policy from a new mayor and council, and be ready to go. So we, I think, can commit to be ready in December to at least provide a framework to start a discussion, recognizing that it's not a one-meeting discussion.
Yeah. No, I think that makes sense then. And then let me ask you this. Last night, we had a conversation around long-term planning prioritization. Given that framing in December, would tonight's conversation impact planning, yeah, next year?
And we'll, and we'll go back over the next several weeks-
Okay.
And sort through that. Again, you know, my sense is this is, this is a major shift. It's not, it's not an impossible one, but I think this idea that easier is better is a hard one for trees in the city of Isiqua. And so let us take some opportunity, we'll, before you see this in December, when we come back to you for the budget, if for some reason we think there's resources needed, we'll, we'll, we'll put that into the budget discussion. But otherwise, we would commit to come back on December 2nd to continue the larger conversation.
Okay. Very good. Oh, is this the, the map you had?
That's the map from the canopy study that, that was used in the first 2023 update that has how, you know, what these percentages are. So you can kind of see, Talis is 73, but it doesn't parse out developed area versus non-developed area. So what we're trying to do with the new canopy study that Dan is going to assist in King County and we're partnering with others, is to get more fine-grained data of in Talis, 73%. You know, here are the undeveloped protected spaces that have 90%. Here's the developed portion and what's the percentage there. And that can then inform what makes sense for us. So that's why I was suggesting perhaps we get that data that may shed some more light about the right percentages, if we want to stick with the neighborhood methodology.
Okay. Thank you. Any other kind of closing comments on this from council?
Can we have a motion?
What's that?
Can we have a motion?
Do you need a motion tonight or?
Absolutely.
And I'm sensing we won't put it on consent.
We can give you a motion.
Yeah.
So, don't want to take a minute?
Sure.
Yeah, do you want to take?
Why don't we get, can we have five minutes?
Yeah, okay. We're going to take a five-minute break, a five-minute recess to come up with a motion and we'll come back in five minutes to read that out.
Thank you. Thanks. Right, and we'll talk.
I move.
Chance, we're ready. Yeah, Chance, I think we're ready to get going again. If you flash the on-air for me, I'll know we're ready to go. Perfect. Wow, how do you do that? So quick. All right, we are back from recess with a motion in front of us. So I will read it off and then we can make some comments on it if we have any other remaining comments that we'd like to make. So I move to forward the proposed draft tree code to city council for final adoption. Amending Issaquah Municipal Code 18.812 as shown in the Exhibit C in the agenda packet, accept no changes to the existing 18.812.060 tree canopy coverage table.
Do you need a second?
I would imagine we need a second.
Yeah, second?
All right, so then we have a first and a second and a motion on the table. Any comments from committee that we'd still like to? Yeah, Council President, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to clarify and just make sure that the feedback that we are providing here is that while we don't agree with the approach of this code, it does get us to a point in the interim while we reevaluate our entire approach to tree code to help out certain homeowners who have been waiting on these tree permits. And it allows staff to have the clarification so that instead of doing a one-to-seven replacement, you can do a one-to-one replacement and other things that are just kind of emergency or urgent and changes while we bring back this entire question of how do we approach tree canopy and tree replacement and permitting and other things so that we better kind of have a comprehensive conversation about who is king and how, what staff should be protecting in those cases. So that's the, the feedback I would provide on that.
Thank you. And, you know, I think, oh, did you want to go first? Go ahead, Councilmember Jane.
Yeah, I guess I would agree with what Council President Walsh said. You know, it seems to me like a lot of this code came about in response to resident concerns. It seems like passing this, you know, moving this forward to council now will help resolve a lot of, you know, urgent and timely issues. And we want to make it very loud and clear to everyone that we hear what people have to say, that the current approach is still overly complicated. You know, there's like three different times when you might need to refer to tree code and we use totally different things like number of trees or canopy coverage or, you know, diameter at breast height. So it's like, is there a way that we can just make it actually simple to understand instead of needing to have like a 100-step flowchart? And so that's kind of the approach that I'd like to see us take, you know, moving forward. That said, I think this, you know, the motion that's at hand simplifies things for our staff and allows more flexibility to a lot of, you know, our homeowners and folks that are using our tree code. So I think we should move this forward right now, but also, you know, we need to continue the discussion and kind of start from first principles of what is the goal of the tree code here? Is it to protect trees at all costs or is it to, you know, make sure that we can have a safe community or balance, you know, have a balance between the goals of tree preservation versus safety to life and property and resident experience?
Yeah, thank you. First of all, thank you Director Dollywall and City Administrator Bob Quiss for navigating us through this, this challenging discussion tonight. I want to nix the king argument and I think balance is the right word here. You know, what we're, it's a difficult conversation, right? We're trying to find the balance between our I-CAP goals, our tree canopy coverage goals, and not being too overly burdensome or onerous on residents in the city, right? And if that's a sliding scale, the policy question is simply not left or right, but right, where does that sit on the scale, right? So I think it makes sense for us to, as you've highlighted to us, correct what needs to be corrected right now for people who are waiting and for some of the issues that have been identified by code users, but also be able to take a step back and say, how do we make this simpler moving forward? And I'm eager to having that kind of framework conversation in, in December and better understanding how we can then have that fuller conversation going into next year. I do just want to say too, as we heard tonight, this has had many touches with different community boards and commissions and this is a very different vision that we're talking about here tonight. And I would hope that no, none of the boards or commissions think that we are neglecting their work here. Of course, we're not doing that. This is something that we just need to get right. And, and so the committee is wanting to, to push a little bit on this and make sure we're all on the same page on, in terms of what are our future goals here and being more simple. And I, and I would imagine that we're all on the same page there. So anyways, again, thank you. We have a motion and a second on the table.
I want to make sure I explain one thing clearly. So the one-to-one replacement, if you have a hazardous tree in an existing property, right? But if you meet the percentage canopy coverage goals, you don't have to do that. That's in, in the code. However, with not changing this table, those percentages are going to be higher. So for instance, if you live on Squawk Mountain and currently the code says 63% canopy coverage. So in order to not do replacement, you would have a 63 percentage thing that you have to show. Under the new proposed code, if you were, you know, you could vary from 30% to 40%, depending on the size of your lot. So it's not going to, there's a little bit of, I think for existing homeowners, the higher bar if we don't make the change to the, to the table. Just want to make sure that folks understood the nuance of that.
I think that's clear. I'll just double check. I'm seeing nods here because there's the broader conversation we'd like to have as tree canopy as that kind of measuring or is the yardstick, is that really the right yardstick anyway? So I think it's the direction you're hearing from council is stick with the existing percentages there.
Higher, so it's less helpful for existing homeowners because there'll be more replacements needed for removals.
Yes, but one-for-one replacements instead of one for?
But, but I think the argument you're going to get is my tree is fully lot, you know, covered with trees, why do I have to replant? We do have some, some of those circumstances that were going to be helpful if with a lower percentage, they didn't have to replant. So this, this, just wanted to be sure that not changing the percentage is a little bit problem for some folks.
May I ask a question?
You may. Go ahead.
So if you can't put it on your lot under what's now been proposed, you have to go pay $1,000 still?
That's correct.
So I know a homeowner in Squawk Mountain is waiting for this and I think how you've explained it to him, that homeowner is still burdened because that homeowner has no other place to put a tree and now we'll have to still do the one-for-one replacement and we'll have to spend the $1,000 or pay for a tree to go in public property. So, just anecdotally.
So if we adopt the table change?
Correct.
It changes us from a neighborhood area to a?
Lot size.
Yeah.
So anyone living on Squawk Mountain that has a lot size of 5,000 to 10,000 square feet would only need to show 35% canopy coverage and not have to do replacement versus 63 under the, if you don't change the table. So it doesn't solve the problem for existing homeowners completely by not changing the table. I just wanted to make sure that we understood.
Yeah, and the thing is, I'm trying not to make things overly complex by changing to a certain type of land use and a certain type of lot size and a certain percentage of canopy coverage and, and, and. It's, it's a lot of requirements and pieces to understand compared to just a neighborhood by neighborhood tree canopy. And so I guess the second piece of that is, how long are we talking on this for?
I mean, it'll have to go through the whole process again. We have to do, anytime we change regulations, we have to do CEPA again, we have to give a 60-day notice to Department of Commerce. We have to go through all the, the, you know, boards and commissions, so it's not going to be immediate, at least a four-month process to just meet the basic checks and, yeah. That's also going to delay some other, you know, like, so we'll have to prioritize if, if this isn't more of a priority at that point.
So the concept is, right now, while it gives them the ability to get their permit, cut down a tree that is necessary and replace one-to-one, if that particular lot would not be able to house an additional tree, then they cannot get the permit, cut down a tree unless they're willing to spend the $1,000.
Correct. And so the similar example for Talis neighborhood, someone has an existing hazard tree, they would have to replant that or pay $1,000 because they're not going to be able to meet 73%, which is what we had highlighted that that was a problem, that these percentages didn't work on a parcel-by-parcel basis.
I guess this one is tough because I think, you know, just switching to the canopy coverage, like the table with the different use cases, I don't, I mean, that's like changing what we're basi, that's like a bigger policy decision than I think even the percentages by neighborhood. And I do see there's a crossed-out change to Talis that lowers it from 73% to 28%. Interesting. But I guess my other question, which I asked earlier, was, you know, the tree permit fees. Are we thinking of revisiting the fee in lieu for replanting a tree? Because $1,000 is quite a lot of money.
Well, that's, that's, we had just gotten that estimate, that's how much it costs between the, the tree cost and the labor and maintenance cost. So it's a bundled rate for maintenance and so the city has to take on planting, maintaining, and all that.
Yeah, I guess, I just, in terms of the canopy coverage, it seems like, you know, most of the times when people are going to have to meet these is essentially when you're doing development on some kind of lot and we're not differentiating between, at the, at least at this point, we don't have good enough data to differentiate between canopy coverage on, that's on, you know, individual lots versus that's like in the public right of way or on, you know, undeveloped land. So if we decide to change the numbers in this table, is that also something that would go through the whole six-month process?
That's correct. So if your goal is to help the existing homeowners in the interim until we get the new data for the canopy coverage, my recommendation would be to make the changes in the table with a recommendation to council to prioritize this work. As soon as we get the new canopy coverage data, then we have a more, you know, focused discussion about approach one, leave it on the neighborhoods. Now we have this data, we can just simplify it, create a neighborhood map and come up with a percentage that takes into account developable land. Option two, you know, keep this land use category and, and by the time between this change and that, we would have implemented it. And, you know, if, I mean, it's, it's pretty standard for folks to know, you know, I want to add my deck, what's my zoning and what are my requirements? People are used to calling the city to get those sort of information, so I imagine it's the same thing, you know, what's my percentage? What, you know, give us your address and we'll look it up and tell you what you're zoning. And then we can create website stuff, you know, behind the scenes where they can add their address and they can look up their zoning and their percentage. So we can work on the, on the tools and the implementation part to make this easy for folks to understand as well until we have a more robust discussion.
Council President.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't love the idea. I don't know where any of these numbers came from or anything, but I guess if what we are faced with here is trying to deal with problems that we have created with our code, adopting the full thing is probably better. I don't like it. I don't like it at all, but it keeps from half-solving an issue that residents are currently facing, so.
Councilmember Jane, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think this is great, but, you know, to the city administrator's point, there's some residents right now who are, you know, facing the prospect of having to pay $1,000 to replant a tree when they already have 45% tree canopy on their lot, which is very significant. So I think, you know, we can, we can adopt this for now. Obviously, it's not great and we want to revisit it, but we can do that later and give some folks relief for the next nine months before we, as we go through this journey yet again.
And just to be clear, that, that is what you're suggesting, that the committee go with the original recommendation to move the full thing forward to council?
I, I believe so because that will, you know, like Council President Walsh said, if you, if you're trying to solve the problem for the homeowners, then half-solving it won't get the, the results. So if the issue is to make it easier for homeowners, then yes, that would be my recommendation.
And you wouldn't have any concerns? You described like how we can make it easier and easier to understand for ease-of-use concerns.
Yeah, we'll work on that for sure.
You're not concerned about cost or implementation or anything like that?
No, I think that should be pretty straightforward, yeah.
What kind of amendments would we need to make to the motion that is currently on the table? Sorry, we can't, we can't take public comment anymore in the rest of this meeting. I apologize about that. We have, we have an agenda that lists public comment at the beginning and, and after council question and answer, and then we can't take comments. My apologies.
So I move to forward the proposed to city council for final adoption as shown in Exhibit, and so you would just take out the, the last part out.
So we have a motion on the table with a second. How do we adjust that to?
I think as the motion maker, I can just accept this as a friendly amendment. And were you the second or?
Uh huh.
You agree?
Yep.
Okay. Then let's strike that. And then we have an amended motion. Does that all sound right to our committee clerk? I think so.
Sure.
Okay. So then we have an amended motion on the table. Any other final comments before we take a vote? Okay. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? All right, and that passes 3-0. Again, thank you very much for walking us through a very challenging discussion. We are moving forward this to the council and I will have some heavy comments and remarks, not heavy, but extensive comments and remarks for the council at that October 6th meeting as well. Any, any final remarks that either of you would like to share with the committee?
No, I think we heard your feedback. We'll take that to task. So as we work through the new canopy coverage, you know, the idea being it's simple, it's clear, the flexibility, you know, should exist for everyone, so we'll, we'll keep thinking about those as we package this for further conversations with boards and commissions in the future.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, so that concludes that item then. So the next item on our agenda is announcements. Any announcements by committee? All right, then our next meeting is scheduled for October 7th, which is my birthday. And the preliminary agenda, which I will be thrilled to talk about on my birthday, are Column 0173, the fire code permit fee increase and E4 budget, and Column 0177, the 2025 comprehensive plan amendments and rezones. So a light meeting. So there being no further business before this committee then, we are adjourned at 8:40 PM and thank you all for tuning in.